We'll be starting in one minute.
Okay, we're going to get started. It is after 7:00. Good evening, everyone. Okay, I just want to welcome everybody to the Instruction and Special Services Presentations tonight by three Advisory Committees. Just a little refresher on what's happening here. Each Committee Chair and Vice Chair will sit at the head of the table. Each Committee Report will be presented in turn, taking no more than 20 minutes. And then we'll have Q&amp;A from Board Members. Okay, any questions? Pretty straightforward, right? Okay. Then we are going to start tonight with with the Advisory Committee for Students with Disabilities.
I was figuring you would do that. Judy just took my notes and went and made a copy of them for everybody.
Okay. So, well, we can either, should we wait or should we just flip the order? I guess we'll flip the order then.
Nope.
If she's, okay.
Thank you. Yep. Nope.
Is this on? Yep. Would you like me to start?
Yes, and if you would introduce yourselves and then go right ahead. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lisa Costantini, and I'm one of the Co-Chairs of the Advisory Committee for Students with Disabilities.
I am Sajad Khan. I am also a Co-Chair along with Lisa for this committee.
I've been thinking a lot all day of what I was going to say to you all. You've read the report, so I'm not going to belabor it except to once again say how great the Special Ed Conference was this year and how we rocked. And we have 2,000 parents this year, which is an increase from last year. And a very exciting thing happened. I was at an IEP meeting, and one of the parents asked questions to the IEP members about something that she learned at the conference. So that was, yes, it was great. It was very reaffirming. So I think those are all the pats on the back that we're going to give us. I think I want to talk to you about the type of students that this report is going to affect and how important it is. First, the training must continue. Special Need Services are dependent on training, and Fairfax County has really good services. We also have really good people that create services that we don't have if we need them. So we have it here. We have a very strong Career and Transition Service group. The problem is the parents don't know about a lot of the information and a lot of the services that are offered in the county. And the teachers don't necessarily know a lot about the services. And it's not just the high school teachers. Elementary school teachers need to know that because there needs to be a focus and a direction for our students, starting that early. ETRs, Employment and Transition Resource Teachers, are not always invited to IEP meetings until 12th grade. It's way too late for our kids because it takes a long time for us to learn things. ATS is probably, Assistive Technology Services, is probably the most underused resource that we have in Fairfax County, and our kids really depend on it, especially in this technology Inclusion has been a big word in Fairfax County. And the ultimate form of inclusion is what our children do with their lives after post-secondary, whether it's a job in an enclave, competitive employment, college, just anything that they do. We, as a group, are underemployed. We are often arrested. Eighty percent of us are going to be molested. And a lot of us who shine academically are going to lose our scholarships and our college placements because we can't handle the social rigors that go along with living away from home. Okay? And half of us can't communicate because we don't have a communication system. We don't have appropriate communication skills, and we've never been taught. Target II is the foundation for a lifetime of inclusion. It is the most important thing that we have. And so to say that, just a little dip into the budget, try not to take away the supports that work with Target II. Please don't take away our Watt supports. Please don't take away the training that supports career and transition, communication. These are the things that we need to have a life after school. And I was sitting in the last meeting, just because I was early, and I heard one student on the MACH School Board talk about the portrait of a graduate. And I got a little artsy, and I decided to give you all Portrait of a Grad, the idea of a portrait of a graduate in our understanding. Our students are twice exceptional students who can't succeed in college, can't get a job, can't maintain a job once they get the job. They're children with high-functioning autism and Asperger's who lose scholarships because they can't handle the social skills necessary to living in a dorm room. There are students who don't have the skills to participate in an enclave due to language and behavior issues. There are cat B students who get, who can't get a job. Just because we have disabilities doesn't mean that we're guaranteed a job, that we can't get fired. Students who need to go into group homes that don't have the necessary life skills to independently manage their care, hence the assault. Students who get arrested because they, it's all causal, but we're not covered by IDEA anymore. And it's all fair out there. It's just not, there's no one to protect us. There's no law to protect us. And students who can't go to college but can't get a job, there's, except for the GME Life Program, there's really no in-between for us. And there's a lot of us out there that fit into that category. So I think what we learned as a committee from working on the School Board Charge was that this is incredibly complicated. It's a long charge. We've requested to bring it over to next year because there's just too much information that we didn't even know about. And that this is probably the most essential thing that a school division can offer to any student with any level of disability, is the appropriate transition and essential life skills to be part of the outside world after school. Thank you.
Is there anything that you'd like to add to that?
She said it all.
That is extremely concise. Well, that means that we'll have more time for questions and dialogue, so thank you very much for that very concise presentation. And we'll move right on then to the Minority Student Achievement Oversight Committee.
Good evening, everyone. Dr. Garza and School Board Members. George Becerra, representing MSALC Chair this year for the second year. And with me is Mr. Bob Shaw, who will be next year's MSALC Chair. Definitely will keep this train moving a lot better than I did at the first year, definitely. I know that for a fact. Let me get right down to it. I'm not going to beat Ms. Costantini's timeframe, so I promise you I'll take my 20 minutes. Start on page 10 of our report, Recommendations. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Moon and the Board for funding things that we've already said for many years. And I know it's been tough times, but it was put in place this go-around in terms of the Early Literacy and the HIPPI Program, in terms of, you know, the VSIP Head Start, in terms of what we need for the waiting list and what have you for the pre-K initiative for getting the closing achievement gap right from the early stage. Second point is, on moving down the chart, is where a lot of our, where a lot of our issues are going to come from and where a lot of our points and recommendations are coming, we're looking at the Strategic Plan, is to be through the Closing the Gap 2.0 Priority Schools Initiative. In terms of tightening the things, like I like to say, in terms from the Division Plan that goes up to the state, that goes, that moves down to the Cluster Superintendent's Evaluation to the Cluster Superintendent's or Regional Assistant Superintendent's Evaluation, down to the Principal Evaluation in School Improvement Plan. So the minute details of the School Improvement Plan were, obviously, we're moving along with Closing Achievement Gap 2.0, where there are going to be metrics in that SIP Part B, which we want, would like implemented at all schools. I know we're working there, but right now it needs to be ramped up even quicker now, especially with the CGT Plan coming into place. Because if they do one now, and they don't look at it for a couple of years, we're already disaligned again. So with that said, our heavy focus is the CAG 2.0. As you know, it's in the process of going through its iterations, going to go to LT, and then come up to Board for final approval. With those CAG 2.0, what we're really happy with is, as you know, the waiver of NCLB has, that the state was granted. We now hone in on timeframes. The state has done 2017-18 benchmarks. That is no problem in terms of state benchmarks. Fairfax County is high-achieving school. You will see that that's already a done deal almost. But we're talking about what is best and what they're, the particular focus of where we need to get everyone at the same level as the Fairfax County brand. With the CAG 2.0, we're going to have goals, strategies, and tactics. Tactics, again, starting with baseline, and then years, percentage growth or growth of what we want metrics after each year, and then 2017-18 as a deadline. I'd like to thank, definitely, IST, Dr. Presidio, Ms. Paderas, and their staff, who are definitely including us with their CAG steering committee this year and the work they fostered in that aspect. Another thing is with the PSI. We always hear about closing the gap, and PSI is two separate things. I think we need it honed in as together. I understand there's different modes of how that's going to be done, but I don't see that as two separate issues. That needs to be a little bit more well-defined. Also, what we heard this year in the aspect, there's been a county initiative, county talk on both Boards, is poverty. Poverty definitely is, definitely a factor. But as with the Tipping Point Study, I think what did not come across with Dr. Sockwell's presentation is poverty is only one factor, needing to look at many other factors. Poverty at a school concentration, not poverty as a single individual trait or characteristic does not make the determination of student achievement. That, I think, was not stressed at that, at that meeting. But I understand Dr. Sockwell did the best he could during the time that was allotted. Also, in terms of, besides poverty, in terms of the composition of the concentration of a group in any school, how that can affect student achievement. So at the end of the day, the Tipping Point Study, we would like to see that there's our schools there that are, we call it odds-defying, that are achieving, have best practices, and that what you need to look at. But in terms of what I see as a county looking at is poverty, it is masking the problem that we've never had for many years of looking at race. Okay? It is also teacher instruction and implementation. You will see data that you've already seen, that it does, you can look at poverty free and reduced, because that's what schools look at as the only factors, not, you know, 10,000 or 20,000 level of dollars and so forth. But you, there are differences in scores, just when you break out free, reduced, compare, or non-free, reduced, to the different levels of demographics. Closing the gap. Like I said, that is something that we're looking forward to with the new, the new Strategic Plan, and also maybe the role of the new Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Lockard. Forgot to mention, he did, was gracious enough to respond back to my invitation today, and he could not make it tonight because of family reasons. So I appreciate that, extending a courtesy email back to me. What his role will be and how closing the gap will, how it will work in the system. I'd like to, I'd like to see who is, would be the czar, quote-unquote. Who will, who will be the resource, who will be the main driver? I know on paper it's the superintendent, but I'm realistically too, that the superintendent cannot do the, all of it, and has to point at number-two person, logically, as Deputy Superintendent, and see who can make that happen, and coming from the top down to the bottom. And with, and with that, I'd like to go to the other, I mentioned Priority Schools Initiative, you know, how we're defining who should be in that Priority School Initiative, the regular PSI, PSI II, why they should or should not be on there. And if not, if we're going to go to a new layout, then what is the new layout will be, but as long as we're consistent. Other parts, I'd like to switch to Mr. Shaw, to mention about some of the things, all the recommendations we have.
Good afternoon, Dr. Garza, Mr. Moon, members of the School Board, and fellow MSALC and other members. Thank you for coming. And I've got three minutes, I was told, so let me make use of it wisely. I'm going to touch a little bit on the toolkit. When I came to Fairfax County, that document, the, there was a hard document that was placed in my hands, and I fell in love with it. And I, I've still got one in my car, and I've, and I've got one at home. And I wanted to find out, where is it? And we have, we have put one now on the web. And we started in January 2014 with one that's available on the website. Thank you. It is a wonderful resource, and I know the Board is very much interested in collaboration with parents and so on. This, I think, will encompass all three facets of that, because parents can advocate for their students. And let me just take you a little bit quickly through this section and here. It's a roll-in. It's there throughout the year. Also, we have got time-sensitive areas that are written by members of the committee, so it's very collaborative. And this, this month, May-June, is your child testing. It's a wonderful resource that we need out. There's a shortcoming. It's on the web. What we have done is, we're getting, we need help from the School Board in getting facsimiles made, so we can also put it in the hands of parents and students. We have had one training session with the parent liaison, and what we hope to do is turn this over to the schools also, where it can self-propagate. What I'd love to do is maybe back-to-school night, this is one of the footstompers. Parents, you've got to go to the toolkit, because there's such a wealth of knowledge. Also, we need more training sessions also for the parent liaisons. We have only had one, would like to do, I think we have got one more scheduled for June, but would like to have some more. So what I would like to leave with you is more collaboration with your staff to make it more user-friendly. It's a little bit buried. We would like link right up front, Toolkit. That's a resource that we should get out to parents, students, and teachers. And also, to support us with getting the parent liaison more training. I'd like to swing also to the Student Leadership Academy. And as you know, there are two schools currently being tested. That's the Riverside and Woodley Hall, and they're two Tier One schools. It is in its infancy stage, and it shows promise. I was very impressed with the briefing we got when they came to our meeting. But what we would like to see is the, it's, you know, that it gets looked at, we find out what's working, what's not working, we make the, they fine-tune the areas, and we get it spread to the other schools. There is, I think, three additional schools in Cluster Four that they're going to include it in, but we'd like to see it go a lot more to all the schools. But we also know, we also want to know what's working and what's not working. So we need your staff to do an assessment. That is what I would like to leave with you. Do an assessment. It shows great promise, and get it to all the other schools. Thank you.
And I'll finish with the last two. I forgot to mention our charges here, as you know. You've graciously accepted our recommendation of last year for PSI and Closing the Gap, but also extending to the discussion or to creation of a student-growth model. And let me talk about the student-growth model in general. This is not that you've heard in the news about teacher evaluation and so forth. This is a student achievement-growth model that many states have already involved. This is for, and I read verbatim from our recommendation on page 11, is FCPS should continue to develop a student-growth model for the purpose of using student data to inform, instruction, and a dashboard to help parents better understand how their students are progressing. As you have behind me, I'd like to first of all thank Dr. Oliver for her efforts and Dr. Breeden for giving her the time to work on this. Definitely, this is something that's, something that, I think, Dr. Garza, you can put, it's something that, the next phase of FCPS, and I think you've already seen this in other states and other areas of your career, is something that, for student performance. Right now, we have, we can look at student performance in a snapshot, just one quick picture. But a growth model can look at like a, like a video, what the student has done over a long period of time. This is something that we've advocated for, because as though, as we're now CAG 2.0, one of the things there is looking at, at all groupings. And I think this model will not, with the old previous CAG, is stigmatized black and Hispanic students as low performers when you're comparing groups. Another aspect is, for Dr. Parrish, or Mr. Parrish said to me a couple of months ago is, in his acknowledgement of, "George, we've got some good schools out there, especially the PSI schools. They're showing growth, but they're still not making that benchmark. But you've got principals out there who are working their butt off." And this is one of the things that we can see with the growth model, is there's schools out there. If you can click on, under the school level, under English or math, it doesn't make, it doesn't make a difference. And if you see it's broken down into quadrants, you got higher, if you go quadrant one on your right, go down clockwise, quadrant two, three, four, and you see the designation of, this was a score, English, grade five, for schools. On SOLs, correct, because that's our only standard currently. Obviously, we have to go where we have. We have on upper right, high-achieving schools with high growth. The second quadrant, you have high-growth, low-achievement. The third quadrant is lower and low. And then we have high achievement, low growth. So you can be the school that, you can answer this question, maybe in my Drainsville area, you know, we have some high scores, but in terms of an individual school, maybe the growth is not, we have high achievement, the growth is not going up as maybe you would like it to go. But the same adage could also be said, you know what, if you're a school who's already in 95th percentile, 95th passing rate, you can't get any higher. And it maintains a lot of work for the teachers to maintain it at that level for the next year. That's also a positive, too, to be said. So you just can't look at it as, you know, zero growth, there's no student achievement. No, if you're at a high end already, but that's good to say to a school community, a parent community, we're at that level every year as my child moves up. The thing that you also need to look at is that mid-area, the 4 to 450 range, those are the areas you have to worry about, will those schools drop down to the lower achievement? That's where also, maybe your resources need to go to. You know, you can do, obviously, you can do the low, low end, but at the high-end, you know, is, you know, less focus. But at the other end, you have to worry about that mid-road there, and what does that mean if you're on that borderline of going from one, if you're going down, or you can move up? What could be the difference? Now, if you look at, you can do it by student. If you can go back and, for looking at school, for student data, it tells you the growth of a student, not comparing like with other students, but just individual student, what they've done over years. And you can tell as, as instruction, as a teacher, what they, they look as a student. Also, what a parent sees, what, how they see their child, and how the school system is doing to better educate their child. With that said, so with the other things is, what enhances teacher instruction enhances also parents' understanding of the system. Some of these things in-house, I know money's an issue, this can already be done. They already have the tools, or majority of it, within IST, I don't even want to call them now, but let's say Professional Development, PLA, and also with IT, they have these tools. You don't have to outsource these things. You know, one of the discussions, and one of the things, whenever we reviewed RFP and so forth with the ECR, is that one of the things they are looking at data, I think you have a wealth of information here with the leaders that you have in-house, and then they can do the same work. You know, they might need a little time, and that might be some new resources, but for the majority of the party, it is already, already in-house, it can be done, and at the times that we're in, I don't think, you know, we would like to go that route. And then the next piece of this would be the cultural proficiency. One of the discussions I heard is, this year, last Thursday, and the big thing was communication empowerment. The lady talked about Title I school and how they're doing in Herndon. But one of the things, if you don't have a cultural proficiency or culture, culturally level at the teacher level, and you're asking parents to do that, I have concerns there. At the skip meeting that Ms. McGlocklin and Ms. Strauss are on, one of the things is what they're doing for their plans, for the county, is looking already equity. And this is already assuming that the schools already have cultural proficiency. So it's also to, for the cultural proficiency to continue on, from what our recommendations, and you can read it on there, as part of the school improvement plans, and also all different components and how they're being measured. I'd like to wrap it up with a personal story, and then one phrase that, sorry. One of my members passed, and I think is very, really useful for tonight. People always ask me, how did you get involved, George? How did you, what, how did it drove you? You know, because I've always been a parent first. I don't need anything to drive me besides that, is that reaching out. You know, a lot of, 10 of the 12 of you know, I think you know Matt Bell, and I've told this story. One of the things, when I was at Robinson, and I'm just trying to advocate for my child, find information, his mom was the PTSA president at Robinson. And she's the one who reached out that hand, and that would make me, how can I say, learn the system, be welcomed in the system, and go from there. And then, and I think that's one thing that we need to look to in terms of where we do the outreach, what are the communications shops doing, what are my principals doing, what are, you know, it's hard for parents, you know, PTSA's, to do that alone. It takes this whole board to make it an issue and initiative. But at the same time, I understand the accountability of cultures owning up to their rights and what they need to fight for their kids also, too, and their responsibilities. So I'll end with one phrase. One of my members, I think, hit on the head tonight is, what you tolerate, you can change. So thank you.
Thank you very much. That was 20 minutes on the nose. All right, our next presentation is the Advanced Academic Programs Advisory Committee.
Thank you very much. I would first like to say that you only have me tonight. My esteemed co-chair, Karen Mativier Carrera, is not feeling well, so she is not here, but she extends her best wishes. I want to kind of go quickly through a PowerPoint presentation to just I want to kind of go quickly through a PowerPoint presentation to just encapsulate the work that we've done this year. I know that you all have voraciously read the report that we sent to you. But just as a bit of a reminder, I do want to put our school board charge up there, which we believe was a very nice, natural follow-on to the work that the AIPAC did last year on secondary schools and in prior years for twice-exceptional kids and mathematics. And so our charge was to identify the best practices for ensuring that Fairfax County AAP services are implemented successfully at the local level, and identify avenues of communication that will ensure that all members of the community are aware of the continuum of services available to our students who have a potential to succeed in AAP services. Along those lines, I would be neglect if I didn't reiterate a bit about AAP services in Fairfax County, and that many organizations, the research has shown, both by the GMU study last year, as well as the work of the National Association of Gifted, that there are many areas in which Fairfax County excels in designing our AAP continuum of services. However, I think we also know that there is some implementation in quality, that there's a perception that there are real inconsistencies across the county and within clusters and pyramids on the quality of the continuum of services in an individual school, which is not unusual, given that all of our services in the county are really based on the personal delivery of those services and the commitment of an individual school. So, building on this year's, the other thing that I want to say is that we've made huge strides in promoting a better awareness of what is available to our students in the AAP continuum. I think that those of you who attended the conference in October will say that it was a well-attended conference and very valuable, not only for the parents. And I was lucky to sit in on a panel where I had parents coming in, I was a little surprised, who were coming in with their four-year-olds to get educated on AAP services and what they have to do to make sure their kids take advantage of them, which, you know, I embrace the enthusiasm of those parents. I think that's great. I certainly wasn't that savvy, but I also get a little nervous about that, and we'll talk a bit about that a little later on. And so, the key to our best practices is really looking at the fidelity of implementation of these programs and services. And in looking at fidelity of implementation, one of the things that we realized is that to have true fidelity of implementation, you have to have clearly stated specific metrics, the timelines in which those goals and objectives are to be accomplished, and accountability for those results. And that is fidelity of implementation for any program. Many of you know, I'm not an academic. I come from the business world, and so those were the types of things that I would do when I was responsible for a line of business. And so now I want to bring it down to fidelity implementation for academic programs. And that it really means the degree to which an instructional model, which we already know is well-done, is adhered to in the delivery of those programs at an individual school level. Basically, we want to ensure that the level of service and the quality of service delivered to our students, to ensure that our students are able to achieve at the highest level they can, should be the same high level of quality regardless of the ZIP code that a child lives in. And so, when we look at fidelity of implementation, we have to ensure access to the advanced curriculum is consistently delivered for all of our students capable of succeeding at the different levels. And so, that is Level Two, Three, Four, local Level Four and center-based programs, and that the quality of service is irrespective of their ethnic, socioeconomic, or geographic circumstance. And that the perceived and real levels of inconsistency in our programming across the county can only be addressed through a commitment at the highest levels in this county to fidelity of implementation. And so, we want to address the examples that are anecdotal, that come up, that there are concerns about the delivery of services based on the availability of a cohort of peers, the availability of advanced academic math options at differences throughout the county, or differences in after-school programming. So we really see this as a vision of a shared responsibility, and that shared responsibility involves all of us in this room, because we actually have a student here, so we know that we have the full continuum. But we also have our vision of shared responsibility, taking into account the budget reality, that AAP services are increasingly under pressure to do more with less. And along those lines, we believe that to make these programs the most robust, we believe that the AAP Program Office could augment its existing excellent framework with providing more specific baseline expectations for individual programs, i.e. get more granular, including adding stretch objectives of what should be available, and then bringing it down to the regional or area level, if I'm using the new nomenclature, to make sure that each area clearly defines and makes public, communicates its objectives for AAP services based on the needs of the unique community it serves and stakeholders, as long as they still reinforce the centrally-held AAP objectives, which are communicated starting at the board level, then the superintendent, and the assistant superintendents. At the local site level, each advanced academic resource teacher should establish and publish clear guidelines on what a parent can expect. What does success as a Level Two second grader look like? What does success as a Level Three kid in an elementary school looks like? What are we, how are we using the garden outside, or the resources of Dyke Marsh nearby, as you can tell where I live in the county, or the Great Falls, or any other, or the strategic business partners with a school? And then teachers setting their own metrics should be clear about what their objectives are and clearly stated. And students should have the ability to make a plan, an advanced academic plan for themselves, that they can see their continuum of coursework, that if they pursue an advanced math option in elementary school, that they have the availability of further advancing their math options, or their language options, or any other option that they are pursuing. So, you know, for example, a school may have a FLESS program that is very robust, and that when they get to middle school, it would have that. Or they may take algebra in sixth grade, so we need to make sure that they're able to take geometry in seventh grade, and algebra two in eighth grade, things like that. We also believe that we need to expand upon our collaborative learning team concept in sharing our objectives across regions and within a region, so that we embed a culture of continuous learning from each other, of the best practices between schools and between regions, and an ability to compare and contrast what is happening and what works at an individual school or an individual area, and share that information elsewhere, and to be able to use our best practices that we see are working somewhere to actually help the less effective or struggling programs, and an ability to identify those innovative programs that are out there. So we have nine recommendations, six of them more general in nature, and then three math-specific. And these recommendations really support the vision of shared responsibility. So we, first, our recommendation is to embrace and promote a culture of supporting AAP at all levels, starting with you all around this table and going down through the whole system. It's vertical articulation of what our objectives are of advanced academics. And secondly, we would like to see a prioritization and full commitment of funding for a full-time advanced academic resource teacher at our Title One schools. This is something that you all embraced a couple of years ago. We understand that it is a budget challenge now, but we really want to make sure that you don't forget that commitment, because it is those teachers that are on the front line that can really bring to the table the best practices that are successful, and they do spend a lot of time collaborating with others, so they will be able to share what works in one part of the county with the other part of the county. We also want to see a more transparent, being very transparent in our objective setting and our reporting of metrics and results, so that we require AAP to be included in each individual school improvement plan. And that's really important, because we actually did a cursory look at all of the school improvement plans. We had individual members look, and there are a number of them that don't even recognize AAP. We also want a policy that encourages peer-to-peer mentoring between school professionals and across the county to enhance the knowledge and implementation of the best practices that we're learning from each other. And a key part is also professional development. I know that there is always a continued pressure on budgets, and professional development tends to be one of the first on the cutting block, but it's also an area which we really don't want to be short-sighted on, because if we are asking our students to be lifelong learners, we should also be asking that of our professionals, and if we believe that, we should also be supporting it economically. And we should provide tools to our AAP students to develop their meaningful, individualized academic plan. Now let's get to math. There seems to be an inconsistency in the methodology for identifying students for acceleration in mathematics beyond what happens in local Level Four, in Level Four centers. And so what we would encourage is that we would actually publish what the policy is and make people accountable for adhering to the policy. We would also like to see a greater communications effort in educating parents on how their students can take advantage of acceleration of mathematics. And there is a small percentage of the population that would like to be able to take advantage and are capable of taking advantage of algebra in elementary school, but there's not a clear coherent policy on that. Looking forward at important issues for the future, we need to continue to educate staff about the unique needs of our advanced academic learners and the services that are available to them, because oftentimes, people don't know what's available, and similar to other programs we've talked about, teachers don't know what's available when they get a student who may need to be in an advanced academic environment, or be able to take advantage of individual programs for it. And so continuing that education process is very important. But it's also very important, and this kind of addresses something that is, many of you received emails today about, which is taking into account that our advanced academic learners are individual students. They are not just numbers in a school. And so, when you look at boundary changes or facilities issues, which I know you'll be addressing on Wednesday night of this week, please take into account that there are unique needs of students for advanced academics, and that it's not as easy as just saying, well, we'll just make sure everybody gets the same service across individual schools, you know, and so we'll just trial this, without taking into account the potential negative effects or impact on those individual students. We would also urge you that in the future, and this is something that may be as a possible charge, or something along these lines, of focusing on the social and emotional needs of gifted learners, in term of their potential, and interventions that may be provided by school counselors and other professional staff in collaboration with the teachers. And also, and I think this is kind of the key, there's been a lot of discussion about the over-identification of students, and we don't really believe that there's an over-identification of students. There is a potential of people really trying to do everything they can to get their child identified as a Level Four student, and much of that is because of a lack of understanding and appreciation of the continuum of services that we provide in this county. So it's an education issue, but it's also critical that we strengthen the individual, strengthen and delineate the individual services so that people know what to expect. So if you increase the confidence in the availability of the Level Three services, for example, then what you do is you take away the impetus or the incentives to try to gain the system through, you know, perhaps test prep, starting in age four, you know, and other things that impact those programs. And I would also say that as we look at our continuum of services and we get into secondary schools, making sure that we strengthen offerings at our base high schools to offer rigorous opportunities beyond the TJ experience that may address the needs of our students that aren't just STEM and STEAM. We have these wonderful academies, but it goes back to the communication effort, and if we could, I don't know how we do it, but as a collaborative effort, we need to do a better job of educating people on the wealth of programs that are available in those academies. And finally, increasing the security of our standardized tests so that they aren't leaked and then become a cottage industry unto themselves. So finally, my last word is, I would be neglect if I didn't thank, most importantly, Dr. Horn and her staff. They have been an incredible support to the AIPAC, and this county is very lucky to have such dedicated professionals across the board. But I work very closely with their staff, and anytime we ask for information, they certainly go out of their way to make sure it's available. I also have to give a heartfelt thank you to Patty. Patty, your leadership and active participation this year has been greatly appreciated and welcomed, so we hope you stick around. And you as a whole school board, I have to thank you, because I know that last year was a difficult year, and you all were very supportive of our programs, and we continue to welcome your support and engagement for our kids.
Thank you very much. Board members, have you been taking notes? Okay, very good. I just wanted to take a moment and ask for citizens who are in the audience, who participated in any of these three committees. Could you stand so that we can thank you and recognize you? Thank you. And now, staff who are involved in any of these three committees, could you stand and let us recognize you? Chairman Moon, did you have something you wanted to say? Or you have a first question?
Questions.
Okay, let me, okay, good. Well, let me just give some guidelines. Let's say four minutes per board member the first time around, and then, so try to pack your most important questions first, and then if we have time, we'll do go-bags. Okay? Does that sound reasonable to everybody? And for you all up here, it's a little bit of a free-for-all, because the board members can ask a question to any one of you, so you have to listen carefully. No time for daydreaming right now. But we appreciate your efforts very much to synthesize what we're in, all these very, very good reports. So there is a lot of substance for us to be focusing on. So with that, I'll start with Mr. Moon.
I don't know whether this is a question or a comment, but, you know, earlier in the evening, we had a student leadership program, and at the beginning of the program, I recognized about a couple of dozen, you know, parents and educators who met with me prior to that meeting about all- prior to that meeting about early literacy program, that they were very appreciative of board's action when we adopted the budget, about expanding and not cutting, but actually putting a little more resources so that we could help, you know, parents who are navigating through the system to be able to be better equipped, to help their children be successful. And they, you know, quite a few of them told me in the meeting, right next to all that, I think as alluded by, you know, some of you, other couple of committees, that we, Fairfax County School System, we provide a lot of good programs. There's a wealth of programs, but they didn't know those programs existed. And how do people find out what programs out there to help them? And I couldn't answer that question at the time. So I do not know whether I should be asking you that question or just throw that out as a comment for further consideration. I mean, we have a lot of good programs, but there are parents, there are non-parents, and residents in the county who don't seem to know that we have such programs. Maybe that goes to superintendent.
From Miami, starting it off, I think the themes I've heard for a couple of years now with all the advisory committees, communication. I think one of the things you need to look at again is Doug Bunzman. I think you need that position to be looked at. And if not, then I expect with the expertise that Dr. Garza's brought to this county with her communications background, that that's going to be, will definitely be improving with the website, with the parent liaisons, with the toolkit that we've had for many years, as an avenue for all kids. You know, we don't advocate just for Black and Hispanic kids, we advocate for all kids. It is at the beginning stages, and it can be a utilized source there for what you're saying in terms of outreach. But again, the parent liaison is a big key. We've only had one informational session with them, and on June 18th, we'll have our first formal training, what the toolkit is. We need to ramp that up more. Yeah, the communications piece, you know, that's the theme that I heard also on Thursday, as you all know from hearing the other advisory committees. I don't know how you're going to tackle it, but you're going to have to definitely do something different and just do it, instead of thinking and overthinking it too much. But I appreciate, again, you commented about early literacy. I forget to mention on that same budget amendment, I'd like to thank Ms. Hines and Mr. Darren Kofek, who has been definitely instrumental into the head start arena. I understand you all voted as force for new rooms for next year, so definitely appreciated of that. So I forgot to mention that earlier in my comments when I first started this out. So, thank you.
The Parent Resource Center run by Gail Holloman has, over the years, expanded their training for parents of kids with special needs. And she just improves her repertoire of offerings every year. I think she's probably another underutilized and overlooked specialist that we have in the county. I think the specialty conference helps, and it's certainly reaching more parents. But there's a disconnect at the IEP level for individual needs. Parent Resource Center and the specialty conference are very general, but the IEP meeting is where I think a lot of the communication needs to happen, to inform parents what the county actually has.
Karen?
Couple thoughts. And there are different levels. One is, you know, as I said, we need a vertical articulation of our services for AAP, but I think we need vertical articulation of a lot of our services. And so there are a couple of different ways we need to address it. We need to address it with, and I don't mean to offend you, but we need more effective communications from the school board itself. Would be greatly appreciated in the community if the school board did a bit more education of the community. And I know you participate at the local level, but you have things like the patch. You have other ways, people get their information differently than they did 10 years ago. So utilize resources such as not only the school meetings that you can attend through our PTSAs, but why not have a quarterly editorial or piece from the school board on, hey, these are things we're doing, and these are things we're looking at doing. So engage your communities that way. Secondly, at the school level, in the superintendent's office and beyond, it would be very helpful to have more communication, proactive communication, because so often we are reactive in this area, area, or radioactive in some cases, because the emotions get so great over, one message gets out there, and everybody thinks that that's gospel, rather than getting, and then you all respond to it or have to react to it. So instead, get the information out, educate your constituencies. You have wonderful methods of doing it. You can do it through multimedia. You can do it through your keep-in-touch systems. But you also, there's a third area that I would suggest, and it takes money, but consider developing a mobile app of a navigator for your parents, a parent navigator to Fairfax County schools. They have it?
To your point, yes.
Oh, then where, but we need to educate people.
If you didn't know about it, this prime example, we're not even getting information to our very families.
Yeah, and I consider myself engaged.
I would consider you engaged, Karen, as well. But, yeah, I think we're challenged as a large system around communication. I don't think any board member's going to disagree with what you just said, or what was said by the other members of these committees. And it was a theme last Thursday, it was a theme that we've heard this entire year. It's something that we need to work on. So I think it will likely come out as a major piece of our strategic planning moving forward. And I think there's a lot of great ideas that we can implement to really move us forward. But look on, if you have an iPad, look on apps. It's a free app on both iTunes and Google. I don't have an Android. I use it all the time because we have actual pictures of the principals.
Okay.
So sometimes if I can't remember the principal, who the principal is, I'll look at it, oh, yeah, that's who it is.
Robert, you have something you wanted to say?
Going back to my PTSA president days, there's one of the facet that I would like to throw in. I was going to do the apples. So it's going to meet them where they're at in terms of languages. A lot of, you know, I would always hear, well, that group, they don't want to come to the PTSA because it's only in English, and they are, you know, either offended or, you know, whatever. So we have got to make sure that whatever we communicate is in their language. Can't, we are such a diverse committee here, community here. And that's also part of the toolkit. It's in various languages. So don't forget to meet them where they are at with their language.
Thank you. Next, I have Ms. McLaughlin.
First, I want to begin by conveying to all three of the committees that these are great reports, and I very much appreciate the time you've spent this year preparing them. Second thing I'm going to say is apologize, just for myself, that once again, my third round here on the board, and we give two hours to hear from three committees, we give you each 20 minutes to present, which means you will hear four minutes from each school board member on a response to the year-long effort you gave. So I can only say that this is not how I think we can honor and really engage with you on your work. And if you all have suggestions, to email us. I would love for my colleagues and I to hear it because I don't even know where to begin. And I really don't feel like we're going to be able to do justice to the great work that you've brought us here tonight. So with whatever few minutes I have left from some of the notes that I made, I think, you know, I first wanted to speak to my concerns about the advanced academic services. I think that you touch upon a really important aspect, which is, you know, this fidelity of implementation. And as a parent in the public schools who had a child both in a center and then also Level 3 students, school-based GT, the lack of fidelity in providing services at Level 3, and from talking to the families in my own neighborhood elementary school where it's still a problem, I think it's very serious. So Karen, you mentioned strengthening the community's confidence in our, you know, continuing of services, remove the impetus of gaming the system for Level 4. Well, when I have families in my district that don't have Level 2 and Level 3 services going on in their elementary school, there is no confidence because it's just not there. And so I think that when you talked about getting an advanced academic resource teacher in every school and every Title I school, I would say that we have to look at this countywide, and it's not just Title I. If we want a separate but equal educational opportunity for all of our students, where we have a center and then we have local Level 4, then we have to honor what that is. And right now, I think we've got a very serious implementation issue of fidelity. And some principals have found the resources to give, you know, local-level services to their students, but in other schools, it's just nonexistent. So that concerns me. I will say, Dr. Garza, that my own children's experience with the advanced math model that we have at some of our elementary schools was outstanding. And so even though there wasn't local Level 3 services for my children at their elementary school, but the advanced math program they were in, you know, led my oldest son to be taking Calculus BC as a junior and excelling exceptionally well. So that's, to me, one of the best models I could point to in saying, gosh, if we had that for Language Arts.
So Ms. McLaughlin, do you have a question, or are you just providing comments? That's okay. But just, do you want them to address that, what you're saying?
I honestly, in four minutes, I'm not going to be able to let them address it. I'm just going to have to make the comments, and then hopefully Dr. Garza and, you know, the committee can, you know, email back. I just, I'm more concerned at also laying it out for all of you, that I think we're well-intended, but the delivery's just not there. So the report speaks to it. I'm wanting to echo it. And I think the, you know, the other point that I wanted to make is moving our school system toward domain-specific gifted model, which is what I've heard Dr. Horn say we've done. I mean, when you go from identifying through top 3%, top 6% to now top 20% of our second graders are qualifying for our centers, and that's because we go with a domain-specific type of identification, then I guess I think that's where we need to start saying, then, at that point, we've got kids in our centers who aren't gifted across all subject areas. So then why aren't we trying to make sure each elementary school can provide quality local Level 4 for those four core subjects? So that if you're a center-based kid who excels in all of them, the center makes sense. But if you're domain-specific and you're gifted in Language Arts but not in Math and Science and Social Studies, why are you at a center? Because my child who was at a center, kids were really struggling in some of those four key subjects. And then the question becomes, what is the center from what it used to be to what it is now? So I almost think, you know, there's a lot of well-intentioned services in this county, but I don't think we've gotten to where we want to go based on the fact that we've evolved in how we identify what is this center-based giftedness.
Dr. Garza, did you want to speak? I know George wanted to say something.
Karen wanted to go ahead and say something.
Oh, Karen?
Megan, thank you. I think, thank you for reading the report and thank you for your comments. First off, you raise an important example of your child with math. And then at another school, a child may have a fantastic local Level 3 experience, pullouts or push-ins, depending on what the priority of local management has on that, at that school. And so it is precisely for that reason that you make our argument for us, which is that we have to strengthen the Level 3 services at each individual school. We have to articulate what can be expected at the school. Because my experience, and I go back to my business experience, that if you require people to clearly articulate what their goals and objectives are, then they actually follow through on those goals and objectives. And so it's increasing transparency, and by increasing transparency, you have accountability. And so if they, and there are anecdotes where you have principals and area leaders who have said, who say, "I so fully agree and believe in the AAP model that I'm going to get everybody in my team trained in the teaching methods and skills so that they can apply it in the classroom." And then you may have one who says, "Not interested. I have too many other issues." And so if, as a county, we believe that it is important to provide these services, and I think we do, because I think it distinguishes us amongst our peers, and it attracts businesses and families to our area because those services are available, then we need to put our money where our mouth is, clearly say what we're going to do at a county level, at an area level, at a school level, and then follow through on it. And if you, if we do believe in this, then ideally, if we have the money, go ahead and spend the money on having a resource teacher in each school. Because that resource teacher, today, the way that we parse them out, it's based on the number of students in a school. So a smaller school in a more affluent area may have a resource teacher that has to spend most of his or her time going through 200 files to prepare for the screening process. That means that resource teacher isn't actually in the classroom teaching or in a collaborative team sharing their expertise to make sure that the pedagogy is used effectively in the school. And so it's a very high threshold before a school gets funded for a full-time resource teacher. And so you have individual principals who say, "I get it. I want to spend the money." And you have, you know, and you've heard my personal story on this. You have a change of principal, and all of a sudden, the rug's pulled out. That is not an effective way. We have to put it in our strategic plan, put it in our school, I don't like the term "school improvement plans." I look at it as our local plans for schools and follow through.
Thank you. I have George, followed by Dr. Garza.
To the points that Ms. McLaughlin made, thank you for letting me represent you at MSAOC, first of all. To the whole aspect of your comment about two hours or what have you for three extensive meetings or reports, I think I still have to take, as a chair, ownership of that, too, or every chair has to. This isn't a first time around for these folks, and they've been advocates, just as I have. That's why I did a special extra effort to contact you all throughout the year, you know, to do what our issues are. Because if I expect personally in two hours or three reports, then I'm doing a disservice to my members. And I, but it's not easy. I'm not saying I'm advocating for anyone to spend as much time as I have the last two years. You know, I'm definitely not saying that. But that, that's just me. To the other point of maybe not hearing our comments our year's worth, I'd like to throw, I'd like to add one, too, and I had mentioned this to our school board liaison, Mr. Stork. MSAOC has had many recommendations over the years, and it's been consistent. There's not a lot of it, has not been new compared to this report. There's not a lot of it has not been new compared to this report. In terms of advisory committees and recommendations, you all started with a plan last year to hear the recommendations, meet at the next work session, what are we going to work on recommendations, and move forward. If we just give you reports and reports and reports and recommendations and nothing's been done, I don't say nothing's been done. Let's say if a response hasn't been given back, George, we've heard you, we're not going to move on it, that's a response to me. But at the same time, I need that to come back from the board. And I need also for these reports not to be answered by leadership team, because I can do that in my monthly meetings if I really, really want to chime in on them. I need the board, hopefully, to chime in on the responses and that they sign off, this is our response. Some overall look at advisory committees, I know what you guys are going to be doing soon, is are we adding value or just a checklist? That's what I'd like to know. Because I don't want to tell my members, this is going to change and they're going to hear us. Because I might have thought that three years ago, but I'm also realistic nowadays. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. Garza, did you want to weigh in at this point?
I think I'll wait till the end, if that's okay, like I did last Thursday, if that's okay. Because I want board members to have sufficient time to engage. It's hard for me to be quiet, but I'm going to work on it.
I know. Thank you. I have Ms. Hines, followed by Mrs. Strauss and Mr. Stork.
Okay. Thank you all so much. You don't know, this is extremely helpful to us. And it is a short time, but my plan is that if there are questions not asked and answered here tonight, I'll be sure to touch base with my representatives on your committees to follow up. So thank you so much. I'll try to ask my questions quickly and give you time to answer. For ACSD, you do have a large charge there, you mentioned that, and a long and depth report, which is very helpful. I didn't see in there, and maybe it's there. Did you think about or talk about collaboration with the community college system in this area? Because I know that's something that some of us board members have talked about with the Nova, NVCC board. So did you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, there's actually some interest coming from the community in that particular topic. And specifically, I understand that a large percentage of folks attending Northern Virginia Community College are on the spectrum or have been diagnosed with some sort of condition that has been significant in their academic careers. From what I understand, it's somewhere in the magnitude of 25%. It is a very large number. And that's because a lot of these folks are not able to maintain themselves independently at a four-year college. So they have the choice to stay at home and go to community college. So there is a tremendous need. In fact, I was, am in the process of being put in touch with, I don't remember the person's name, but the woman who is in charge of Northern Virginia Community College curriculums because they're interested in an adaptive skills program, life skills training program for college-age students.
Awesome. Thank you. I'm very glad to hear that there's been some follow-up on that. Wonderful. Okay, moving over to MSAOC. You know, my general thought from listening to you guys is that there are a few things going on that I actually would like the board to get a briefing on. And one of them is the Student Leadership Academy. And I guess if we get a briefing on it, it might be helpful. But if I could, do you have a sense of what the goals of that? I mean, do we have any metrics that, you know, we're sort of measuring the success of that program by that you're aware of? And maybe later staff could answer that question?
That's one of the things I think I alluded to, that it's so new that we are also recommending that, you know, an assessment be done. So, you know, we know what's working, what's not working, and, you know, we start doing concrete metrics to measure and, you know, what's working or not. So we are also asking the same thing also, that an assessment be done. Hopefully, I'm answering your question.
Well, yeah, and I guess, I don't know, I guess the committee didn't think about maybe, maybe it wasn't in your charge, sort of what those goals ought to be? I mean, how should we measure the success of a program like that? I'd like your thoughts on it.
This is, as you know, something new. And this is one of the recommendations, I think, that we came about, that Mr. Darris, who's our expert, and I can chime in more if you want to hear it right now, is, and she just briefed us in our last, or two meetings ago. I could not attend unfortunately because I had to do my advocacy with the Board of Supervisors that night and helping you all out. But with that said, I think, Mr. Shaw can maybe chime in on this, it was after-school hours that this program is being?
Yes, it's an enrichment program that it's 30 hours. It's after-school. And let's see, it's at sixth grade, sixth graders, targeted at sixth graders. And I think the cadre selected are from the, oh, help me with the name of the...
Young scholars.
Title one priority schools?
No, no, no. The students that were selected, they were, they were top-performing. And I'm trying to remember the name.
Young scholars, maybe?
Young scholars. Thank you very much. At a senior moment. But, you know, so they are motivated, hard chargers. And as I said, what I saw from the briefing, you know, some of the things I liked were the visits, the mentorship. I think what I recommended also, when we had the briefing, was, you know, to have a diversity of mentors come in so they can get a good cross-section of what's available, things to aspire to, and so on.
Okay, thank you. I mean, it sounds like a great program. I just think we probably need to have some measurable goals there. The student growth model as well, I'm assuming that we're trying to fit this into the portrait of a graduate as we go along. And it'd be good for me to have a sense. I mean, if we have fewer measures and if we begin to sample, which are some of the things we've talked about with assessments, I'm not sure, you know, how we fit that in with the student growth model. So those seem like big challenges. I don't know if you guys thought about that?
Yeah, a little background history on why we asked for the student growth model in terms of our charges here, it's kind of changed or cut in half. As you know, last year, the state direction was to have growth models. But as you know, that changed with the new leadership. So we nixed that. We did get a briefing from Assistant Superintendent for Virginia, Ms. Dr. Lovingreider, who gave us some basics on growth models. But like I said, like to reiterate, it's nothing to do with teacher evaluation, it's student achievement. But yeah, definitely is to fix how to incorporate that, how to, it's a new way of thinking. You know, it is also, how do you record that? Because it's not cohorting. And at the same time, you could change your report card aspect, if you want to use this as a growth. So it's something you all have to get expertise on.
It's very complex, I know. Last question for you guys. Cultural proficiency training for teachers, I agree that it's something we ought to be doing. In my nine years in the system, I never had it. So I'm wondering if it's something that is not happening at all or very ad hoc?
From my understanding, and sorry if I misspeak here, is it's not mandatory. I don't know if you get hardcore data on it. Our thing was not to enforce it overnight, but also for new teachers, also ramp it up within three years. That was our recommendation from last year. And also some things that we've heard from Mount Vernon High School were things to get a little ugly in terms of what occurred with the cultural, let's say, awareness or sensitivity there.
Thank you. Okay. Question for Karen. When we did the GMU study, one of my complaints about it is that we did not talk to folks who are not in the program. So basically, we really didn't survey or get much information from the level two, level three families, teachers, kids, anybody. So I guess my question for you is maybe twofold. If part of your charge was to talk about equity of access, and, you know, I know you've talked a lot about the need for measures, you know, the need for measures of success in all of this. Did you guys think about, and maybe I missed it, in your report, sort of a measure or a metric for equity of access? What should we be measuring over time to see if we're achieving equity of access into AAP program?
We talked a lot about ensuring that the programs at each level were available and clearly identified and made available and accessible. And we talked about that the most success, in many ways, would be seeing kids that may be identified. And we already are seeing this with our young scholars today, where they were identified in elementary school for level two and level three services. And over time, because of the pull-out programs and the programs that have been tailored to their needs, they have been able to progress. And you see many of them taking advantage of taking all four honors, four honors classes in middle school, which is considered a full-time AAP level four-type service. And so it's really, they're just now starting to track, I hate, not track, wrong word, pull it back, but starting to be able to monitor the success of those programs. And we would encourage that. And if you look at the slide where we talk about the longitudinal analysis, it's really seeing how those kids are taking advantage of the individual programs and then possibly moving up through those programs. So yes, we do. And that was actually, I will tell you, a very active discussion in our group because there were some that would like to focus only on center programs. And so it was a very contentious discussion on multiple occasions as to whether the APAC should only worry about center-level programs and center-level students, or are we really there providing advice on the continuum of services available? And I think we ended up in the right space, that we had to look at the full continuum of services and that we had to look at the individual needs of students at each level. But I will tell you that there are some that continue to believe that maybe we should only be working at that 3%.
Thank you. So far, just as an observation, each inquiry has ranged between nine and 12 minutes. But that includes the questions and the answers. So just putting it out there. I have Mrs. Strauss, followed by Mr. Stork and Mr. Velk...
Great. First of all, we really appreciate your reports and whether or not we send back to you a very thoughtful 10-page personalized response. The opportunity to discuss, and we really do appreciate it when during the year, if we get information, emails, phone calls, chats after a meeting. And George, you particularly are there, I think, at every meeting. But I would encourage you, because you all are in a position of talking about during the whole year, areas where you have special expertise. So please share that with us during the year. But I very much appreciate the reports. It's great. Okay, first of all, George, the growth demo, the chart that you showed, where was that from?
Are you talking about who created it or the data or both?
Both. Yeah, because I couldn't find it.
There's a link. I thought it was on the report and we can provide you that.
Can you send it?
Definitely. And the data is, the data is not just ones and twos we put in. This is data that was, FCPS data. So I cannot talk to the particulars of what, who and what, you know, where, obviously because of privacy reasons, but PLA, the shop.
Okay, so if we could have a link resent on that, because I couldn't find that. That was very good. Years ago, we used to do more growth models. That was long before the SOLs. And part of the challenge, well, and what we would find is that the longer students were with us, the better they did. And at one point, we were very concerned about trans latency rates many years ago. So, but part of the problem is what metric do you use? What test do you use? What, you know, what is your measure, what is your tool, your yardstick? So, but I think it's something we need to look at. Yeah.
Yeah, in my understanding with the growth model, it's individual student.
Right.
It is not a group, trans latency or mobility like the model Mr. Paris has with PSI.
Right, right. And that would be great, because I think that's exactly what we need to see. We get frustrated with just seeing how each third grade does on their third-grade SOL. It doesn't help us. So I was pleased that you focused on that. On the AAP after-school programs, it was interesting that you highlighted that. And if you could expand a little bit on what you found, because I would imagine it also has to do with what parents are willing to volunteer to put together in transportation and everything else.
It's actually a follow-up or continuation of what we started last year in looking at the availability of after-school programs for our middle school students. And if you remember, we did a matrix, or actually, Carol's office was very helpful in putting together an overview of what was available at each of the individual middle schools in the county. And then we, individual members of the committee started looking at what was available at the elementary schools in their area. And there was a, there is a discrepancy of what's available. And yes, you are correct that much, that part of it is attributable to the availability of parent volunteers. But it's also the availability of information so people know what they could possibly do for their kids to provide that advanced environment or that enrichment environment. And so unless we spend more time communicating what is available and sharing across schools, but there's also a second part, which is, in many schools, they have business partners that help in the enrichment programs. And we don't have necessarily a consistency in the business partnerships across the county.
We're asking, by the way, we are in our governance committee meeting this morning, we're asking for a new measure that would provide to, the goal would be to provide two business partnerships for every Title I school to make sure that we...
Yeah.
The other thing, middle school after-school programs, right now, they're doing a survey. You might want to take a look at that survey monkey, because they're asking, you know, what are the programs you have in your middle school? What would you like? What does your kid like? It's a very nice survey.
Yeah, well, and we're glad to see that. Because we look at the whole child for advanced academics. And so if you look at the whole child, then you need to not only focus on making sure that there is a high level of services available in the academic environment, but you also need to ensure that there is an enrichment opportunities. Because you also want your children, as they grow, to be able to know how to stimulate themselves outside of the academic environment.
Right, great, thanks. Very quickly, on the communication piece, we are just always frustrated by that. I don't think we'll ever find the magic bullet, but we just have to keep at it. I was very pleased to hear that Northern Virginia Community College is looking at our children with various challenges. Because I think that for an awful lot of kids, that does provide the solution. And it's a good solution.
It's a first step.
Exactly. It's an excellent first step that will often lead to the success that you're looking for. So, great, thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Stork, to be followed by Mr. Velkov and Mrs. Evans.
Thank you. First, let me start with MSAOC and George or Robert, either one of you. One of the comments you made, George, obviously struck home with me, which is the effort to try to make the work of the committees more, us, the board, be more responsive to the work of the committees. And I think we still are struggling with that and I think that's part of the dialogue we were having earlier. But you made a statement about addressing value or a checklist. And I know I've been part of many of the conversations at MSAOC, but I haven't been part of all of them, and particularly some of the ones related to the report. Was there discussion by the committee about whether or not they believed or perceived that they were providing value versus a checklist? And can you maybe just comment about how they view their roles and, in general, do they, do you, the committee itself, and do you believe that you're providing value-added versus a checklist? You, meaning representing the committee.
Correct. One of the themes that's come out is in terms of our recommendations aren't first go-rounds, second go-rounds. And we can show you with our previous, we call report cards, our presentations, that it has been addressed multiple times. So in terms of maybe the phrase, and I said checklist, maybe no, is it a checklist? But has it been something that, have we said before, going to the notion of, are you hearing us? That could be negative, it could be positive. It's an observation. In terms of your aspect of, you know, I said last year personally, and I said to several board members, is a consortium, I think I threw out this idea with Ms. Reed, of all advisory committees and tackle a charge from this school board to look as a system to answer questions. Not to take away from the individual advisory committees, but at the same time, go as a collective whole. collective whole. Because if not, we're going down our lanes, and that's why you keep on hearing themes, themes left and right. But if you look, I understand, Ms. Reed, your comments last year, we're already asking volunteers to do a lot, we're going to put another on their plate. Let us answer that question. We don't want to do, we don't have enough time, but at least the board has extended that hand and said, hey, we want to get involved in helping you all as a system, like you guys are doing strategically.
I think, kind of part of the reason I asked that question was, I think it's important that we're not wasting our time, and that nobody perceives that we're wasting our time. And anybody who attends the MSAOC meetings realizes that we're not wasting our time, at least in terms of the dialogue and the discussions that go on. And the question is whether or not we're moving something one direction or another. And I do, like many of us, I share, I'm not clear on that. And I'm looking for, always looking for ways to try to do that better. So in particular, any guidance or thoughts that the committee may have about how to improve upon that, I would personally welcome. I know that we have, as the board itself has, a process that we've agreed to, where we're going to consider what's been, the presentations that have been made to us, we're going to identify any particular school board, kind of policy-level issues, and then staff interns are going to identify any procedural and staff kind of related issues, and that we're going to act on those one way or the other come September, no later than October. So I'm looking for that, us to follow through on that model, to provide that, kind of close that loop, if you will, so that we can start the new year, the new school year, with guidance that would be kind of relevant and a follow-on to the work that this committee and other committees have already done. So I wanted to take a minute to highlight that. The other questions I have are related to advanced academics. And first off, I don't know if I need to be asked by Ms. Horn or somebody else, but my understanding was that we have both level two and level three services at every school. Is that, is that true? It is true, okay. Because I heard earlier that, at least the belief that we didn't. So we have it. Now whether or not it's adequate or sufficient, I'm sure there's plenty of time for discussion there, but those services are available at every single elementary school. Peer-to-peer, that's a conversation that I particularly advocated for, peer-to-peer work by teachers within, in the system. And part of the issue, I specifically talked about Sandberg at that point, the math program at Sandberg was kind of reconstituting itself and trying to improve itself. And there were other schools which had, you know, very successful math teachers that had, in particular, as measured by the number of kids who got into TJ, and the number of kids who are taking high-level math. And the fact that we had an opportunity to connect those folks and do some internal development that might be beneficial. And that's not to criticize anybody at Sandberg or any other schools, it's just to say, here's a program that's successful, are there things we can learn from that? Did you all discuss those kinds of things? Did you, okay.
I'm sorry. That's precisely our recommendation, that we have some higher-performing programs, and we have some less higher-performing programs. And so the thought was that if you get people in a peer-to-peer mentoring situation, then it's much more collaborative, and it's not suggesting that there are bad teachers or bad programs, but instead, looking at it from the positive growth aspect of, what can we take? What positive aspects of a successful program can we share with a school that may not have as much success? And it's not a one-off, it's a continuous process. And Dr. Horn's team has started that process with the, with some of the elementary school resource teachers, but it's really based on the availability of people being able to have the time to meet together. And so at least with the elementary schools, it becomes easier because they have half-day Mondays. It becomes much more challenging when you're talking about the middle and high schools. It doesn't mean that we shouldn't strive to do it, and there are all sorts of other ways of collaborating today that maybe weren't available when I was younger. But we certainly would like to see multiple ways of fostering a collaborative environment amongst the advanced academic teachers.
So that's the general recommendation. Did you have specifics on certain types of programs, or certain levels, elementary versus middle school?
We didn't delve into that level, because frankly, we only had so many meetings, and we had a lot of snow this year. But I also think that it's not only peer-to-peer for teachers, something that we stressed was the importance of administrators embracing the advanced academic services. Because you, anecdotally, there have been some administrators who have said, that's not my priority right now, I've got too many other fish to fry. And the reality is, is that we understand everybody has full plates, but these kids also deserve the highest level of programs, too. And so having that peer-to-peer discussion amongst administrators is important, as well as teachers.
Yeah, I welcome that recommendation. I think it's, there's value clearly that we can benefit from. And then the last point is, the last question, I guess, is on communicating opportunities for math acceleration to parents and equitable access to students. I think that's one part. Did you discuss, and I know you and I have had many, many, many discussions on this one, those schools where there's clearly communication, but administrators are not as engaged, or not as committed, let's say, to math acceleration, particularly elementary school? Did you have any discussions around how to address those issues?
That's why we have encouraged having, as part of each school plan, and you note, I don't call it a school improvement plan, I think it has to be a school plan, a clear policy statement on how these services will be provided. And so it welcomes, first off, you need to have parents involved in the school planning process. And you also have to have an environment where, once the school plan is published, it should be available to the community on the web. Then it invites a conversation. And that's that, you know, it's a transparency issue. Because I think that if you have that transparency, you're less...
That's an equity issue, too. I know that's part of your report.
But as long as you have the transparency, then you are going to have a less likelihood of the services not being available and having equitable access.
And those are some of the specific requests for specific objectives in here, measurements. Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Velkoff, followed by Ms. Evans.
I have a couple of comments and questions for each committee, and I will ask them in the order that you presented. So first, Mrs. Costantino, I just want to thank you for your concise presentation and a compelling narrative that sticks. And I'll just say that it remains an unfulfilled goal of mine to be as succinct as you were, and to speak with such clarity.
A New Yorker is what you want to be. I can help you be a New Yorker.
So, thank you very much. My comment for you is, as I was hearing the totality of the discussion, was, I was getting a sense of déjà vu. And in particular, it was reminding me of the pre-K issues. Because this is an area, what you're describing, where there's this overlap between, there's stuff that the school system does, there's stuff that the county does, and the state, and the federal government, and you have these different silos. Can you just briefly comment on what you see, and how we would go about, if you have any thoughts, and if you don't, that's fine, but if you could just comment on that fragmentation of governance, really?
I think the school system, oops, is this thing on? I think the school system is trying, FCPS specifically, is trying to overcome that. They do work with DARS now, because they had to change their acronym. But we don't work enough with them. What I'm hearing from DRS is that the students that graduate from Fairfax are not DRS-ready. So if you're not ready for this silo, and you're coming from this silo, there's nothing in the middle, what are we going to do? CSA, a community service board, they've cut their budget. With the DOJ coming down on Virginia, and the training centers being dissolved, there are many, many more clients that have to be served in Virginia. And they, in a way, get first priority because they are already in the system. And if our kids are not better prepared, we won't get the job, we won't get the housing, we won't get the service in school, or the job coach, or whatever, and there's nothing in the middle. So I'm concerned that if life skills are not beefed up in the school system, we're not going to be ready to take advantage of what are in the other silos. And without anything being in the middle, our kids are sitting at home without anything to do. And when a child with a disability sits at home with nothing to do, they lose focus, and they lose the abilities that Fairfax County spent so much time giving them. And once that's lost, there's no IEP after that. There's an individual service plan, but it's not the same thing. And Kim and Irene don't run that agency, so we don't get the same quality of service. So I think that's the problem. Did that answer your question? I want to make sure.
Absolutely. So I'm taking it as a matter of course, that superintendent and all of our educators are taking to heart the things that you've said about what we do within the school system. And I would also offer to you, if you have any ideas about things that we might want to put in our legislative program, if there are legislative issues that we need to take to the state and federal government, I think we're all ears. So thank you, that was excellent. Mr. Shaw, very briefly, you presented to us the toolkit, which is, I'm, I think all of us are very grateful that the school system has worked in collaboration with parents to produce this. And just very specifically, I was wondering if you were advocating or requesting that we produce hard copies of this. That's one question. The other thing was, I believe I heard you asking for perhaps flyers to be given out at back-to-school night, that would, that parents could take a look at and then be able to find this. So I'm not sure I completely heard what you were recommending to us, so if you don't mind repeating that for me.
Well, let me start with your second part. Because it's currently, it's a web-based format, there is a gap in terms of, if a parent does not have the computer access or so on to get to the toolkit, a hard copy, a facsimile, is that other continuum? So it does not break, it still fulfills getting the information out. I'm the incoming president, so I've got to be careful. I know personally, I would like, I would still like that hard copy. And, you know, so jumping here, I don't want to over, he's still the president, I was in the military, and I respect authority. So I don't want to give a position that's not, you know, what he, but personally, I liked it, because I could go to that booklet for myself, with my family, and I could see, ah, these are what's available, that's where my son should be, I've only got boys, that's where we should be, and, you know, I could discuss with teachers, and so on. So I like that hard copy, you know, it had dog ears, it had lines, it had, you know, red ink, all kinds of stuff. So I guess I'm old-school. I still like that hard copy.
I think what Mr. Shaw is, obviously, the experience is that he had, and also that I had as a parent, understanding the budget constraints and the talks that you've had over the years concerning this subject, we're trying to move into a new media format. At the same time, if it's accessible, that's obviously the big digital divide question, if they get to that point, then they can download it and use it in that manner. But at the end of the day, I'm not advocating for that extreme amount of money that we advocated before, but there should be some small copies.
Right. So I think, I think the message I'm hearing is, completely online is not going to reach everybody that we want to reach. But perhaps trying to put a paper copy in the hands of everybody in the county is also inefficient. So we just want to find a proper balance. Okay, that's good, thank you. There was a lot of discussion on the growth model, and then that gets into all kinds of issues about assessment. And there's so much to talk about there that I'm not even going to scratch the surface, but I remain, of course, amazingly interested to see where we're going with assessment in the school system. I mean, I know that's going to take some time, and that's covered there. So I'm just going to pass that topic for now. Ms. Corbett Sanders, you made a comment that, you know, pricked up my ears, having something to do with security of the tests, right, that it fuels this little cottage industry. And are we talking about tests that are delivered in paper form, that get into the hands of other people, or are they online tests? I just don't know, so maybe you could educate me about that.
One of our, actually, my co-chair on APAC was at a meeting a couple of months ago, and was actually handed a flyer to start tutoring for your pre-K child to be able to take the COGAT in second grade, and the ENAT in first grade. And it was a bit stunning, that, you know, it's a whole industry of prepping kids for a test, which is an abilities test, it's not an achievement test. And so it's a bit of a cognitive inconsistency that we're prepping kids for an ability, you know, for an abilities test, because then oftentimes, they know how to take that test, but they may not necessarily be, have the abilities to succeed. And what we're really talking about, when we look at each child, and I say we, and I'm not an employee of Fairfax County Systems, but I'm passionate about our children, so please forgive me for that. But we want to look at our kids as individuals and by what their needs are. And so their needs get masked when they are prepped for these tests. And what happens is that some, there's leakage, and people may share what's on the test. I can tell you that when my daughter was in sixth grade and was getting ready to take the Iowa aptitude, Algebraic Aptitude Test, there was a local tutor who said, I have the test, and I will prep your child to take the test, so they will be guaranteed to get into algebra in seventh grade.
So if I could just try to keep this brief, and I appreciate, I share your values about this, I mean, and I think it's far more than just tests that get you into the AAP system. I think tests should be, you should just be able to, you know, all of our SOLs, all that stuff, you should just walk in. There shouldn't be any kind of prep. It should just be measuring what kids know on the day they get, they take their tests. So I agree with the values there. I would just, again, ask the school system that, I don't know if there are security issues with, you know, paper documents being under lock and key, or that there are security issues of things that are available online, but I would like us to, I'd like some assurance that, from the standpoint of the school system, that we have these materials secured. My final point...
I think it's very, I can't let that go without being, about making sure that I'm framing, reframing this.
Okay, thank you.
These are national assessments that we contract with these vendors to use these tests to, for the purpose for which they're intended. It doesn't mean we are the only people in the United States that have access to those tests. Now, they're nationally, these tests are considered some of the best in the country to measure giftedness, right? But it doesn't mean other people don't have access to them. And furthermore, any vendor can say anything they want, okay? These are vendors that are wanting to get students in, so they can tutor them. But in the recommendations that we received in the report from George Mason, they did recommend that we consider developing our own assessment potentially, so that we have yet more control. But there's a lot more about this in that recommendation and the work that we've been doing around implementing those recommendations. But let's just be clear.
But let's just be clear, we don't have a special test that somebody's gotten access to, or that, it's not that way, not that way at all, just.
I'm very grateful that you interrupted me and have prevented me from propagating misinformation, so I feel like.
Oh, no, I wasn't suggesting that you are Mr. Velkoff. But I wanted to make sure it was clear.
I did have a complete misunderstanding about that, so that's very helpful. So, I have one last thing, and then I'm done.
Can you wait for a go-back, please? We're at 13 minutes for you. You win the prize so far.
I think I may have taken some minutes.
Okay, we have Ms. Evans, followed by Mrs. Smith.
All right, I'll try to be brief, because I know a number of people have asked similar questions. First of all, I just want to thank you all for the wonderful work that you've done. You've produced wonderful reports that have given us a lot to think about and a lot to follow up on, so thank you for that. Now, I'm looking at themes that kind of flow through all three of these reports, and one of them that keeps coming up is consistency. Consistency of access, of availability, fidelity of implementation, and I do think that that's something that, across the board, we really need to pay a great deal of attention to in all these different areas, so I would just simply make that comment. And a couple of you mentioned too, including these areas in the school improvement plans as a routine matter, and that's something that we should be on the lookout for as well, that our schools should be consistent in that way as well. I wanted to ask Mr. Becerra and Mr. Shaw, you mentioned, in light of the consistency issue, the PSI schools, and you had some comparative data there about some PSI schools and some other PSI schools. Is the bottom line on this, are you feeling that perhaps we should be targeting differently on the PSI schools, or was that simply a matter of giving us the comparative for our own, to draw our own conclusions?
I guess both. One, obviously, to compare, because that's what we're looking at, you know, because it got changed recently, the new PSI methodology, so we had no room to see if it's working or not. But in terms of, I know that, I still haven't heard anything back on Dr. Garza's initiative going to Brockton to look at that aspect of what the system might have learned, and where maybe the PSI type of, new PSI might look like.
That's a good point. Yeah.
But that's my point, answering your question on those, that this is more comparative or just analysis, this is what we have. These are, a lot of this is VDOE data on these tables, so it isn't something we generated, you know, also. It's, you know, we might put in little yeses and nos, but majority of that comes what you guys report to the state.
Okay. I'd also be very interested in any follow-up on the defy-the-odds schools that you were talking about, and I don't know if you have any more information to provide on that, or if that was an area that you wanted to follow up on next year, the schools that defy the odds with the.
Definitely, along in conjunction with the Tipping Point Study.
Right.
That's where I recommendation, and that's where we would need, is it PLA? Program Evaluation to assist us on, in terms also assisting on my advocacy with Ms. Corbett-Sanders, as I said on the APEC, or did, was the fidelity of implementation for them to look at that also.
Right. And the fidelity of implementation, that's a perfect segue, you know, that's something that I care about deeply, and so I'm glad you focused on that. Where we always kind of run into a problem is how to determine that, you know, you talk about metrics, but, you know, in the end, a lot of it has to do with how it's delivered in the classroom, as opposed to what's on paper. And I don't know if parents, looking at an AAP center, would have any way of knowing what's going on at another AAP center. So, I'm glad that you gave us some thoughts on, at least some ways to get started on this, on this issue. Is that something that your committee's planning to follow up with next year, the fidelity of implementation issue?
We haven't received a charge for next year, but certainly, we look at the work of the committee as a continuum. And so, as you see some math recommendations here, we worked on the math, math recommendations are focused solely on math a couple of years ago, so I'm sure that fidelity of implementation will continue to be in people's minds' eye and come up in conversation. I think you raise a very important point of how do parents know what to expect, and that's why we have focused so much on being very transparent and very clear and objective setting, so that it is vertically articulated from the top down, but that at each individual school, that there is a clear representation of what does level-three services look like at our school, what is success there? What does level-four services, or what does level-two services look like? And so, it's really that clear articulation that can then, frankly, parents can see what's available, because they read a school plan, and they may want to look at another school plan.
Right. Well, I appreciate that, and I think that's a critical area, particularly for the, for our special programs like AAP. And I guess lastly, I would say, on the parent advocacy toolkit, I enjoy hard copy myself. I have a lot of dog-eared resource materials, too, so I can certainly see the value of that, at least having some for people who just don't have access to online resources. And I'm glad to see you mention, again, parent liaisons. Several committees have mentioned the importance of parent liaisons, and how you had one session with them, and would like to have several more to help them get this information around. So, you know, once again, we see the importance of that particular function. So, thank you again very much for your excellent reports.
Could I comment on that, before I forget on the parent, or the handbook? I'd like to thank, first of all, you had mentioned Mr. Velkoff about parents, or this being a product of parents, correct? The board, and also the departments we've worked with have heard us, and let this be apparent, quote-unquote advocacy book. I know advocacy can be used sometimes in a negative way, but in terms of the collaboration with the system, which I've always believed in, we've also worked with DECO and IST. They give us, they give us literature that's already out there, so we're in, you know, collaboration cohesion of what is out there. They review, we write it, but they're giving us resources. Before you write it, this is what we have, and if we have questions, and they give us, now, it's taken us a couple of months, because obviously, it's a working product. So, it's, we're working together, and it's just going to take time, because at the end of the day, it's our fault of our growth, is now we have it, now as volunteers, now we have to do it. Now, that's the harder part. So, thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Smith.
Thank you, Mrs. Reed. You know, communication is so hard, and letting people know everything we do. You had me think back to when I was a PTA president in elementary school, and at the time, Tom Nuttall, I don't know if anybody remembers, Tom Nuttall was head of math, and I had him come in and talk to the parents. And so, how do we network and use those resources of people? But we came up with the FCPS mobile app, so I have to show you what I found, I was over here playing. So, I went to the mobile app, and then I clicked on the little FCPS book, and Parents comes up here on the top, I click on Parents, Advocacy Toolkit, right there on the mobile app. But how do we get enough people to know that these things are out there? So many people have phones, so maybe some people want a hard copy, but maybe some people are moving around and they can get it on their phone. And so, we all have to work together better to get it out there, but this was exciting. I learned new things today, too. So, thank you all for your hard work for our school system.
Does anyone want to speak who hasn't yet spoken?
Mostly, one, I'm sorry that I wasn't, I was invited to speak to a community tonight on digital citizenship, so that was important, that was a follow-up. I do have a little bit of a follow-up question to what Ms. Evans was asking about, both the PSI and some of the other issues that she brought up, in terms of the fidelity of implementation. And it builds a little bit, sometimes we learn out of the mouths of babes from our student leadership cohort earlier this evening, is sometimes I wonder, and I think Ms. Reed in the past has been the best to articulate this, is what happens to committee work and questions like that after, because you said it's not your next charge, what, where, you know, I just, I wonder what happens to ideas like that and the follow-up? Because we're not, we're not following it up, I know it's out there, I know that, you know, the superintendent has, you know, things on her radar that, you know, are either on or not on our radar, but I'm wondering about the follow-up.
During the purple folder, I brought with me.
I'm just wondering if there is a way for committee charges to not be bifurcated from one year to the next, and that there's maybe like a follow-on, you know, white paper advisory commentary that happens, you know, two or three or four months into the next advisory committee panel, to highlight, say, by the way, let's not drop this, you know? And Ms. Reed, I know has been good about asking those questions, so please.
We've had, for the, I think it started in 2005, a follow-up committee for the special, for the ACSD, and actually, we started adding into the report last year. And we actually have a meeting every quarter, but we kind of, we lose that timeframe a little bit, with Irene and her people, and we go over every single recommendation that we have made. And we either keep working on it, we retire it when we're satisfied, we discuss whether it's ever going to happen, and if we all agree it's just not, then we bring that back to the committee. We have committee reports every few months regarding the status of our recommendations. And when you talked about whether we were part of a checklist, or whether we really made a difference, through that committee, we found that we make a really big difference. We're cooking with gas, and part of it is because we have this dialogue with the people in charge about what we've talked about before. Nothing is ever let go, and I think it's one of the most positive things to come out of our committee work.
And I can't disagree with you on any respect, that ACSD is frankly the model on the follow-up. And that's, the magnificence of that is, of tracking the recommendations, is something that is, I don't know, it's like a best practice. And so, we don't have pockets of excellence, you know? Maybe, you know, that model is what we carry through, because I think there are different perspectives on where we are on PSI, but I don't think that there's going to be any disagreement around the table on some of the recommendations around math and fidelity of implementation questions. So, you know, these are things that I think that need to stay on the radar of all committees, and that we don't lose, because, yes, we have a state mandate for ACSD, but they've, you know, beyond exceeded, you know, the need to exist, they make a difference, so.
Can I just say something briefly on, because, absolutely right, and one of the concerns after the GMU study last year was that many of the recommendations might, you know, just fall through the cracks. And I have to congratulate Dr. Horn's staff, because what they've done is they've actually developed this wonderful tracking mechanism of all of the recommendations, and built out what is being done at, you know, what was the recommendation, and what the county is doing in response to that recommendation, and the administration staff is doing in support of that, or central administration staff. And then there's this additional column we recommend, which is now, what is being done at the local level? These are things that were identified as necessary actions, they're being done at the centralized level, but there are activities that have to take place in the buildings. And what we've asked from the committee is to have that local input.
The only question I have about that is, when you say the recommendations and how they're being implemented, and specifically for AAP, is assuming that all of those recommendations have been adopted by the board, not necessarily that they're recommendations of the committee? Because if that translates to committee work starts to direct staff work, that's concerning.
It wasn't us directing staff to do anything, it was more of the recommendations that came out to have more specificity of what's happening in different programs, and those came out of last year's work, not from the committee, but through the GMU study. And then, there was, the staff took the initiative to follow up and say, okay, this is where we're going.
The only reason, you know, I kind of bring this up, Dr. Garza and my colleagues, is, you know, I do think that the use of committee time is something that, how we use committees, and the breadth and scope of which committees are used, and what that means for staff time and board time, is something that I think we're going to have to be a little bit purposeful about going forward, as we attempt to be more strategic. And thus, you know, if there are good recommendations, and as we look at committee structure, and just, you know, how we functionally work with committees, it becomes more important to track good recommendations, and that we don't lose those. So, I'm just throwing that out there. Thank you.
Okay, well, I will take a turn, and then we have time for go-backs. And I'm going to follow on what Ms. Schultz was just talking about. I think we all heard some themes here tonight, and I also heard some themes here tonight that I heard the last time we heard the committee reports as well. And that kind of begs the question about how we're actually building up the information and what we're doing with it. And one question I have, just for an example, is how do you feel you have done in terms of coordinating across the program areas? Like, for example, I noticed that no one from facilities is in this room right now. And so, Karen, I have a question for you. Did you consider the facilities impacts at all in the APEC? I know the answer, but I'm going to give you the opportunity to just say that, because my point is that another time, we'll have the facilities people, and they'll say, oh, we're overcrowded, and it has implications for the programs, but yet, in this discussion, are we purely talking about the programmatic or the instructional component?
We did not look at the facilities impact. We really focused on strengthening the services that are available, and felt, I think, a continual theme was that if you strengthen the services available, then there will be less of a penchant for trying to do anything and everything possible to get your child into a center program, even if maybe that's not the best place for your child. And so, we didn't really talk about the overcrowding of facilities, felt that there was more of a discussion of, when do you look at introducing, you know, we did have staff briefings on local level-four services becoming available at a number of middle schools, and heard what they were doing in that realm. We heard about a new center opening up, but we also heard, and a continuation of last year, is the best practices for those services being available, talking about, you know, a sufficient cohort, a number, how many kids, you know, what percentage of the population needed to really be taking advantage of services. And so, no, we never talked about facilities. And frankly, I will tell you, I was a little surprised this morning when I opened my email and got a lot of those emails about it, which is when I went looking to find out what the facilities recommendations were.
Does everybody know what she's alluding to? That if you've read ahead for another work session on the FPAK recommendations, they do address the advanced academics in there, which has created a lot of consternation and rumors, we're already getting emails about programs being shut down. So, I really wanted to provide that opportunity to say that my belief is that we need to determine a better way to look at issues more holistically, because they still seem to be presented in silo, and it's not your fault, we asked you to look at the instructional program, and that's exactly what you did. But next week, we'll be talking about the facilities, and so, I just wonder, again, I'm And so, I just wonder, again, without belaboring the point, if you all have also noticed any compartmentalizing, or have you had, do you have any suggestions about how we can work more smartly? Georgia, you and I talked about the themes coming out about dealing with the parents and communicating with the parents and the community, as an example. So, do you want to, do you all just want to take a moment and talk about that?
In terms of MSAOC, what I've tried to do is tackle the issue in terms of the system. Is it a lot to ask for a committee? Yes. Is it a last ask for an individual to know both sides of schools and county? Yes, it is. I think I've done a good job, not a great job. But one of the things that FCPS and Dr. Dale, Dr. Garza, Dr. Dockery has given us the opportunity is some of our issues that we look at as a system comes from county down to the bottom. Given us the opportunity with the skip program. What I heard out of Mr. Velkoff's question to Ms. Constantini was the pre-K type of thing. That's not going to be answered just at the school end. I'd recommend for them to be on the skip program, or at least brought up, and I'll bring that up issue when they come next year, you know, the membership of that group. Yeah, if you said that start, we've looked at facilities, we looked at APAC, you know, or AEP services. One of the things I think we talked about also with our liaisons is what would be a good charge for next year? You know, and I've heard the notion, George, you're killing me with looking at the system. But at the same time, then where I heard HRRC's report last year, which was very in-depth on parent liaison, one thing that may be cross-sectional is that fidelity of implementation. When we're talking about level services, one through four, when we're talking about the lawsuit that's going through, where we're talking about equity access, maybe that's a good theme for us to hook horns together in collaboration with your, with the school board and stuff. So, I'm, yeah, you need to look at the system. If not, we're going down our silos, our lanes. But I think in terms of closing the achievement gap for all kids, we have to look at that.
Ms. Reed, I want to weigh in on that, if I might. I promise I'd wait till the end, but that one I can't let go. And it's another one, Mr. Velkoff, I can't let go. You know, it's our responsibility, I think, as a leadership team and as a board, to connect the dots. I would never expect a community member, as well-intentioned and as engaged as you are, George, or any other member of this, of this community on any advisory committee, I think you bring forward your best recommendations, and in the best of all worlds, staffs already started implementing them. As you pointed out, and was pointed out very clearly last Thursday, the strong working relationships with our staff and these wonderful parents and community members that care about our schools and care about our children, that's where we get things done. And it doesn't have to wait for a board member or a superintendent to say, go do it, they see the value in it, and they're doing it already. But it doesn't mean to say that we can do everything. In Shaq, there's some recommendations that have been made, we haven't been able to do them yet. FPAC will bring recommendations to us, it's unlikely we'll do them all. Okay? So, we are responsible for making the decisions, we're responsible for connecting the dots. And so, these are recommendations. Most of the time, you know, we've implemented them, and I think we're moving ahead, we have shared commitment, I think that gets us, moves us forward. The silos, we recognize that's something that we, I mean, we've said that all year long, we recognize that's a challenge for us as a system. That was part of the reason why we've just done something very courageous, and that is said, we're going to reorganize ourselves to help us create more alignment throughout the system. We didn't have to do that, it would have been much easier for us to do nothing. So, I think we recognize that we've got to do a better job across the system of aligning our work.
Did you want to?
I did. I think one of the obstacles that you're going to have when you deal with parents of special needs kids is that transition is probably the scariest thing we will ever think about, because it means we have to think that we're going to die, and who's going to take care of our kids after we die. A lot of us don't want to look at how, we're still in denial, we still are mourning for the loss of what we don't have, and we don't necessarily have the strength to have these conversations as early as we need to have them. So, I would like to suggest that when you do connect the dots, that you take that into consideration, because a lot of us are not ready. I think that in this particular case, for this particular issue, it is half of our responsibility, because we're not asking the right questions at IEP meetings. But I think we need a pass, because this is a very tough thing. And I think that part of the communication that, the communication skills that you instill in the people that facilitate your IP meetings, with the ETRs and case managers, is the fact that we don't like this life, and we don't want to have to talk about what's going to happen when we're not here anymore. And I know that sounds very dramatic, but a lot of us, that is a big problem, and you will get a lot of pushback from parents, and that's a hard thing for you. You still need to do it, but I just want you to know it's really hard.
I so appreciate that perspective, and I appreciate you bringing those thoughts. When I was speaking of connecting the dots, I was really speaking to all these different advisory committees, and how the work seems to be in some people's, you know, minds, and I think we've been challenged by that over time. And so, I apologize if I wasn't clear, but I do appreciate your perspective.
No, I think, I think one, I can just leave it at that. I think that one of the strengths that we have, because I appreciate Elizabeth who's saying that we are a strong committee, is because the people in the county that we work with listen to us. And I don't know if it's because this is such a difficult topic, and you don't get into this line of work if you don't really have a passion for it, but that's half of the battle. And we don't necessarily, when we retire stuff, when we retire recommendations that are just never going to happen, we're actually told right up front, we're not doing that because we can't, it's not our purview, and we don't want to. And there is a certain respect that comes with that, that makes us feel better about making the recommendation in the first place.
One last thing, and this question's actually for Dr. Garza, and that is, how do you envision the strategic plan, maybe further focusing some of these committees' efforts? I mean, to me, it's a little bit, right now, the cart before the horse, and I guess I, as one board member, would be hesitant to offer new charges and have them go off when we really haven't focused necessarily. And that kind of goes along with this idea of connecting the dots, I think.
I was actually, that's on my notes.
That's on your list?
Some things I was going to talk about. You want me to wait?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, if you would wait. So, now, a couple of go-backs we have, and we are going to get out of here by 9:30. Okay, so, first, we'll go to Ms. Heinz, followed by Mr. Velkoff.
Okay, thank you. And I'll be brief. I just FYI, you know, last year, I had a long-term substitute job in Loudoun County in second grade. And actually, one of the things I was required to do was to prep all the kids for the COGAT test. And that, I don't know if that was just in my school, or if that's county-wide, but they took it upon themselves to practice the COGAT test with every second grader. So, that's, I'm not sure it's a good use of time, but it is equitable, in a sense. So, I, my follow-up is just, and this part, maybe this gets to connecting the dots, I think it very much does, MSAOC and APAC, and how you guys work together, or whether you do. And I heard, George, I heard you say that you were a member of APAC at the same time that you were on MSAOC. So, I have a couple of questions. One, do we plan to continue to have that sort of human bridge between the two? That's one thing. And then, also, I'm just wondering, if there isn't a common question for both committees, and I guess personally, I'd like to see this in the charge. You talk a lot in APAC about inputs, you know, fidelity of inputs in a way, you know, what should the instruction look like, what should the training look like? But I don't see a lot of outcome measures. And I understand that, they're hard, you know? But when we have such a glaring inconsistency between the demographics of the community and the demographics in a program, I think we ought to be at least talking about outcome measures. And to me, that's a conversation, I, to my mind, it's the biggest challenge in advanced academics. And I also think it's an important goal, in my mind, for MSAOC. So, I wonder if you wanted to think about that, respond to it?
A couple of things. One, we sure hope MSAOC is planning on continuing to be involved in advanced academics, because it is a very good relationship, and it's one that I think contextualizes the advanced academics discussion, and one that is important because of that. You should also know that in addition to the formal linkages of having people on that committee, we also have informal relationships, because many, you know, we talk, we see each other, we'll sit down over a cup of coffee, just like he, you know? George works 27 hours a day, if you didn't know that. And so, that's part of it. As far as the outcomes, that's, and maybe we weren't very eloquent in our report, but that's what we were talking about, of having clearly defined metrics, and having a clear discussion of what does it look like? Because, you know, I can't tell you what it should look like precisely, but it's, if the school clearly defines it, and then you have that cross-fertilization because of the peer-to-peer, then you end up strengthening those metrics over time.
Maybe I should clarify. What I meant by inputs and outcomes is not, you're talking about what the instruction should look like, that sort of fidelity of implementation, right? I'm asking what I think is a tougher question, which is, what about the numbers? You know, what do the numbers look like? How many kids of color? How many Spanish-language kids? How many kids in poverty are actually participating at all levels in advanced academics, right through high school? And, you know, our numbers are not good. So, are we going to have that as a goal?
I believe that it is a goal for the county, and Dr. Horn, maybe you can jump in here, but I know that the county has, several years ago, clearly stated that they wanted to increase representation in those programs at all levels. And that's why I'm a big advocate of the Young Scholars Program. I think that the Young Scholars has been an incredible, nurturing environment to prepare these kids to fully participate in the higher-level programs. There was a video recently, or an article in Parade Magazine recently, of a young scholar who had certainly progressed through the program. You know, that's anecdotal, obviously, but we want to see more and more of that, which is why I think you had such a voice-for-us discussion in our meetings as to how do you identify kids for these programs? And there are some that would say that we over-identify, but I don't think we are when we're pushing for the identification of kids to participate in Young Scholars and then continue on. There has been, Carol, you really are much better to jump in on this.
Karen, can I interrupt and say that we are in the lightning round now, and we need to just be very brief, very brief? And I know everyone's very passionate, and some of us would be willing to stay all night, but others, I know, are anxious to kind of move things forward. So, I'm going to cut us off there, okay?
If we could get George's response to that?
Yes, George.
Yeah, my perspective on that human bridge, yes, we'll have that. I'll be honest with you, it's some hard discussions that they need to have. Do they want me? Probably. Do they want someone more passionate? Probably not. It's as courageous a conversation as the APAC needs to have within their 3% to 6% that some other members want. I'm all for that, too. Maybe a separate advisory committee? I have nothing wrong with that. But at implementation phase of the level, different level services, that discussion needs the hardcore numbers, what is going on, you know, with that look, that I'm for. But if that, if that discussion's not going to be started or made, please don't waste my time.
Okay. Mr. Velkoff, followed by Mr. Moon.
So, at the point that I discovered the length of my leash, I was going to say something about fidelity of implementation. And Dr. Garza, when you speak, I'd just be curious about how you view the recent reorganization addressing issues like fidelity and implementation.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Moon?
Am I the last, am I the last one?
Oh, no. Mr. Moon, followed by Ms. Schultz, Ms. McLaughlin, and then Dr. Garza.
Okay, I used my time.
Okay, very good. Ms. Schultz?
I just wanted to follow up. I don't know if I'm like trying to come up a little bit in the 30,000-foot, which trying to play off of what Dr. Garza was saying versus what some of our committees are saying, but I wanted to back up a little bit off your question, Ms. Reed, and in the issue of the connecting the dots, that's what I'm afraid of, and maybe that's what I was alluding to, you know, in a peripheral sense in my earlier commentary about the work that committees do, and whether, you know, sometimes we get into directing committee work with charges that really is staff work, and that we need to, you know, the question of whether we need to reframe some of this. And I sent some of this commentary to Mr. Moon earlier today in the request for OEs about what the charge is for committee work versus what the charge is for staff work. And I think some of that is a reflective conversation that the board needs to have. And some of it is stove-piped, and I do think that we need to have a question, because Ms. Heinz's question was about MSAOC and APAC, and my immediate note to myself is, well, but not in the absence of ACSD, because that applies. And there's an interconnectedness there. So, you know, I think that we have to have this conversation, because I'm sure you don't want to have stovepipe conversations, and how we best charge committee work, but remembering that it's not staff, you know? And I'm, I don't know if we are perceived as providing charges that direct committees like staff, but I'm starting to feel a little bit like we are. I don't know if you have a comment about that, Dr. Garza?
Okay, thank you. Ms. McLaughlin?
I guess maybe tagging on a little bit to what Ms. Schultz and others have said. In my go-back, I wanted to say a couple of things. Number one, in my mind, when Mr. Becerra said, having a czar for closing the achievement gap, I couldn't capture that better. I mean, this is something that is a national issue, and I've been hearing since I joined the board that we've got, you know, different schools within the county, 200 schools, where we're starting to see progress. And I got to tell you, I sit on the school board, and I couldn't tell you which of those schools they are, what are they doing? So, after two and a half years, I feel no more an expert on understanding what are the identified, you know, problems. I mean, obviously, we know what the national research says for achievement gap challenges, but I don't feel like we've had the substantive, you know, conversations and direction to go. And when you said the czar for closing achievement gap, I thought, well, there you have it, because it is, it's a massive undertaking unto itself. And I hope that we will, as a board, take that up from this conversation tonight and make it part of our strategic plan. How are you really going to tackle this? Because talking about it is all we do, and I don't see the steps we make. One example is the Young Scholars. I think I've been on the board two and a half years, I haven't seen a monitoring report or something that says, here's where Young Scholars is, here's where it's thriving, here's where it's not thriving, here's what we need to do. But that, to me, was just another example. For ACSD, when I campaigned, you know, three years ago, what I heard from the community was access to services was so hard. And I'm still hearing that anecdotally from families. And so, when I think of the challenges and where ACSD could help us, I'd love to be looking at, you know, where are we still having those barriers? And I know Dr. Dockery's tried to help us understand, sometimes it's just going down to the school level where they don't necessarily understand, but it's saddening to me when I still hear those. So, and keep in mind, when 14-
Ms. McLaughlin, I'm going to have to cut you off. I'm sorry.
I don't understand, the whole point with the go-back was so that we could finally, you know, be on for four minutes.
Would you like to make your point, then? Because Dr. Garza will have the last couple of moments.
That's fine. My point was that when you've got 14% of your population is students with disabilities, but they make up 40% of the students in our discipline, you know, those are examples, again, and it's not just to go to the hearings office. Those are the pressing issues that I would love to have our advisory groups speaking to. And so, I guess for you to help us as a board start to say, how do we make the charges we give you impactful, meaningful- we give you impactful, meaningful, and really address what the community is saying, 'We're still not doing this system.'" Not for you guys to necessarily report what we'd like you to report on.
Thank you.
If that makes sense.
Okay, Dr. Garza, bring us home.
The last word. I would just have to reiterate what our board members have said about how much we appreciate you, the amount of time and energy and care that you put into this work. I know that many of you serve on a variety of different committees, including BCAC, which is a committee that I'm very involved in. So, I appreciate your continued interest, concern, advocacy on behalf of our schools. You know, this might appear to some people in the community that this is a very short conversation, and there's not really, you know, necessarily a lot of depth around it. I will tell you that this is ongoing work that has been underway in this organization for some time. And I will tell you that I think it's important for our board to be very up on these issues. But I believe that it's stat, much of this is staff work. And so, I would agree with Ms. Schultz that it doesn't mean the board shouldn't be involved, but in terms of the nitty-gritty, day-to-day, roll up your sleeves, dig in. I'm very affirmed by the fact that many of you had very nice things to say about our staff. I hear that everywhere I go. I heard that last Thursday. And I think that's where, that's where the very meaningful work occurs, is those interactions within, within, from parents and community members on an ongoing basis who have the in-depth, and that we have great staff members willing to lead and carry that work forward. So, I appreciate that. It's interesting that these three committees are together tonight because of the issues and the groups that you represent. These are daunting but important challenges. Interestingly enough, everywhere I've ever been, these were the, these are, these are daunting and important challenges that are being faced by public school systems all across the country. You know, how do we serve the needs of every child in our system equally well? How do we prepare every child for success? And you represent the continuum of that, of the needs that are, that our children face and what they bring to the table. So, while, while it is frustrating for some of us about why it hadn't been solved yesterday, you know, I, I believe that we are all committed to showing the rest of the nation that it can't, these issues can be resolved, and that we can serve all children equally well. But these, we will not solve them overnight. School systems across the country that have achieved significant results in these areas, again, has taken years, and I know that we will get there. I, it's interesting because I heard the same themes from all of you, and I think I can sum it up in a number of different statements. Standards, written expectations, we heard that last Thursday, standards. We talk a lot about being very clear and explicit around our standards. Our AAP program, have we ever written down kind of what our standards are? And so, we're looking towards, how do we do that in a way that really helps us be explicit? And that will help us get to achieving the consistency and fidelity of implementation across the system when we have some clarity around what does program quality look like. And that applies to every one of your, every, everything that we're doing that, and certainly what you talked about tonight. Accountability. Once we have those standards, and we also have to be able to measure and hold ourselves accountable and hold our system accountable, hold our schools accountable, hold our leadership accountable. But it's very difficult to accomplish that without being explicit about, about what the expectations are. So, moving forward, oh my goodness, I could talk all night about growth models. Had a lot of experience with that. I would just say we have to do that the right way. And psychometrically, we have to be very psychometrically sound. Otherwise, you can result, create conditions where you have false positives and false negatives if you don't do it the right way. But it is so important because that's the only way we can fairly measure the effectiveness of a lot of our programs in our schools. And it really levels the playing field for our teachers, particularly with our teachers who are serving students two and three years behind their age or probably peer group. So, I do, I'm so committed to having a, a psychometrically sound growth model. I'm, we have great people in our system, and Kathy Oliver is a perfect example of that. But I'll have to be convinced to see that we can develop it ourself. We might need to look to some national folks to do that well. Dashboards, I think we've got to get there. We've, we've got to be able to be transparent and be able to show our community the return on investment, right? Where are our programs, you know, how much we're investing, what kind of difference they're making. I, I believe we'll get there in the short term. Communication, you know, we heard that again last Thursday. It's something we've heard throughout the year, and it's something that we strive to get better. We want our parents to know how to interact with our system. And the, the advocacy book, I've heard a lot about that. I think there's some ways to find, we have to, you know, meet that continuum of parents, right, from those who are sophisticated technologically, but those that might not be, the language barriers. So, we're working, we're working on that. And then responsiveness, you know, we, you know, that kind of goes with the communication, certainly is responsiveness. And then finally, I think the way that we make a difference with the work that you've contributed, contributed is we will summarize, summarize all the findings from all the different committees. I think we can do that in a way that would bring it to the board as we start to develop strategic, our strategic plan. I think it's another data point that we can use as we, as we develop our priorities moving forward. So, I believe there's a way not to lose this good work moving forward. So, again, I just want to say thank you all for your hard work. I know that I speak on behalf of our great team here, that we take all of your recommendations very seriously, and we will bring it to bear as we plan for the next year, as we continue to hone our work with children and get better as a system. So, we're very, very grateful. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Garza. And now Chairman Moon would like the last word.
Just, just one quick comment on the process from this point and on for a board members and also representatives from advisory committees and the public. Unless the board decides to do otherwise, we'll continue doing what has been agreed that we do, which is the staff will provide the responses to the recommendations sometime in the fall, and that they will be all communicated to the respective advisory committees. And you will have a chance to review and working with your respective committee liaisons. If you feel that further discussion is warranted, you will contact school board chair to schedule another discussion session. For the last two years, I have not heard from any committee wanting to have a further discussion. But it could be different, or our board could decide to do otherwise. But that's the process that we have agreed to follow. And with that, I want to thank Mrs. Reed for managing this work session upon very last minute notice. And thank you. And I will see all the board members again tomorrow for a close meeting. Thank you.
This meeting's adjourned. Thank you.